Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Athens and Grafton School Board Meeting.
A meeting to order, Athens, Grafton School District, municipal board meeting, Thursday, August eighth, 2024. Introductions.
Oh, Marty Merrill, Grafton. From Grafton.
Lynn Morgan, Athens. Kathy Seattle-Goodwin, Grafton.
Andy House Superintendent.
And Nancy. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, one, yeah. The agenda. We need to discuss the labor contract in executive session. I guess that should probably come under.
It should, yeah. Thank you.
All in favor of the adjustment, um, under business to discuss labor contracts at executive session? All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes? The eyes have it. Communication and public comment. Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. Review and approve minutes of July second. Any changes, adjustments?
I review them, I don't know if you.
All in favor to approve the minutes of July second, 2024?
Alright.
Okay, all in favor, um, who? Any objections? None. Minutes of July second are approved. Reports. Finance Director.
Um, Jim was not able to make it, I apologize.
It's alright, I talked with him. At all.
His deputies will.
Basically, I told him that he didn't need to attend, that he could go home and.
Good, good, yeah, it's raining now.
So basically, he has passed out a financial report here, and I don't want to go through all of the detail, but the key element is, we were budgeted to spend a million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, and we did spend a hundred, one billion, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. So that means, we were favorable by ninety-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The biggest item there, that I quickly looked at, there's about a forty thousand dollar reduction, you know, underage budget for tuition. So that was forty thousand of that. We had twenty, twenty thousand in facilities. And we had some in special ed. So, those are the main items that resulted in that portion of the variance for the year. I also looked at the revenue. And I believe we have another approximately forty-something thousand dollars favorable to our revenue budget. So in total, we're gonna end up with about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars surplus for this year. It was looking at to be a hundred and eighty-one, but then when I looked at things, I noticed that, we originally budgeted a hundred and six thousand dollars coming back from the WNSU from an audit, and we only got back seventy-two because it wasn't as much as it was originally anticipated. So that means we'll have a surplus, should have a surplus of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which when added to the surplus that we have presently going into future years, should be about three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And those are the key elements of the findings. Report.
Where did the money come from? I understand.
Well, that's what we already had as a surplus. That in articles the past year, we put out into the future. So we have some that we said we would put into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year.
Right.
And we had eighty-five thousand, we set aside for tuition. In the reserves, so that's what we have left. And we also have money in the capital reserve. We spent, we had a hundred and fifty, I know we're doing the painting and the paving, I think, out of that.
Yeah. I think there's a few other things that we might need to address.
Yeah.
Talk about. That's all, I, I'm assuming there might be things that come up throughout the year, you know, you're gonna wanna.
Yep.
Make sure you maintain that.
So on the painting, did that go over a little bit? It stayed at the same.
Yep, I mean, you had a, I mean, we didn't have any change orders on that, on the paint, so.
And the paving?
Vaping, same thing, yep. So the nice thing about a bid is, you know, you gotta, you gotta stick within the bids. You know, if Angela all of a sudden said like, I wanna pave a whole back swath or something like that, then that's a, you know, it's a change order that we're gonna have to do, so.
I didn't say that. Thank you, Heidi. Principal's report.
Give me one second.
So I decided this year that I was gonna make a presentation for my board report instead. Just so that it was a little more interactive and you could see, and I could include pictures to show what I was talking about. So I'm still doing it, like in a list, Nicole, and I'm sending it to you. Put on that same document if you need it for the notes, but then taking that and just putting it into a presentation. Not a whole lot, really, for this board report, but there are some things.
All I was gonna just add in, our goal also is to take principal, all for all our schools, but I'll take their principal report and, and just publish it on the website. So now that Angela's doing this way, everyone will have an opportunity to see it this way also. And then, we do, we have to record all our meetings now.
Correct.
So what we do is, we are currently right now, live streaming to YouTube. And when you go to your website, there's a, a new, you know, hyperlink that tells you what to do. You click on it, it'll actually go and, and you can pull up all the different meetings as they happen, go along. People can watch live, but it's recorded immediately, that way we don't have to deal with it. So it's all being prepared.
Now, well, so if they access the website, parents can get this?
They will, yes, they will be able.
And I'm happy to post this, like I could put this on our Facebook page and include it in the newsletter. That would all be fine. So our enrollment here, the thing to note is that we have a Chester family that's, I put private pay, I don't know if that's the right word. And then there is that live link there, that blue that says here that you can click and see all of it. That won't be available for everybody. I don't know if it could be, Andy, we can talk about that, but that just like shows our projections for all the years going forward.
It should be. I can kind of.
Well, I've shared it with you, but I don't think like if I put this on Facebook, if like anybody could just grab that link.
We could add, you could add it as a slide.
Okay.
Just an extra slide, yeah.
Video, okay. So we have these projects. I know that you were aware of paving and painting, and then there are a few others that I wanted to talk about, which is, we needed some boards repaired on the outside of the building. You can see that there's like a tarp hanging, that was a pretty significant repair. The clock tower needed some repairs, and the shed roof, and I'll talk about each of those here. So they finished paving, that looks great. There was no issues that I had heard of. But it looks really nice, even up against the curb, and they did that like all by hand here, except, which was really nice. I sort of took an angled picture because it's not all done. With some, the rain that we've had, and then some of that really intense heat right at the beginning of the summer, it cut down some of the days that he was able to get here, him and his team to get here. So he promises it'll be done before kids come.
Did they, did they find any water damage in terms of why it was buckling? They.
I mean, I think it's the same problem that we say, is that the moisture is.
You may have an ongoing problem with moisture that it's leaving the building, going out. So, so it's just, it's, some of it's the actual design of the building, type of thing. But also, you know, I think that, you know, he, he did some pretty good prep work this time, and that's gonna help. So scraping off as much as you possibly can, that's the, the big piece, but.
You know, the other, the other thing that he said is that each year, he could come, like at the end of every school year, we could budget, you know, a few hundred dollars, and he could just go around the outside of the building, scrape some of the spots that are, you know, showing somewhere. That way, we don't go all this time without painting the building, and it's falling, you know, it needs all of this work. But just keeping up on it every year, so I told him that we would do that. I assume that that's something that.
Is there, is there attic or a place where you can look, where the peak is inside, or any leaks or any?
Like, so that, that peak is right there in the gym. And then all of the other, there, there is space between our ceilings and the actual roof that there's like all, you know, this drop ceiling, there's space up there. That is an actual peak.
But you have a metal roof, which the other buildings don't have. So you have an advantage there, you know, so you have less opportunity for feet from rain and snow. But water, I mean, what was described to me by Steve Horton is, you know, when, when buildings get built and they, you put tieback up or whatever you do, all those things are, houses originally wanted to breathe. And we started creating things to stop them from breathing, the natural breathing. And so it's just, in some ways, there's natural, you know, moisture inside of your buildings that needs to move out, it's just getting trapped.
Cause you need the airflow.
Right, so that's why they originally came back in and they did some, they put some spacers underneath some of the clavards to try and get some air, that, yeah. No, they, no, underneath each one of, some of those clavards, you see how they kind of are a little wavy? You can kinda see that?
On the right.
So that's because they, they've actually put these little shims underneath parts of those clavards to allow air to flow underneath there. Try and control that a little bit. But, you know, what Steve had said was, really the way to fully address the issue is to take all the clavards off, redo like your, your sheeting and your tieback and all that stuff, and then do vinyl site. Huge cost, so that's why we didn't go that way, but, you know.
So I think if we just keep up on the painting, every summer, have them come, do a little bit of work, it'll just maintain how it looks. So you can see there, that's what's covered now with the tarp. Dave Smith, Grump Haskell doesn't replace the board, so Dave, that's who Grump goes through. But Dave's also an employee of our district, so, or of our SU. All of that there, like kinda like halfway down, you could basically put your hand through and go to the gym. If you were brave enough to put your hand all the way through there, which I wasn't, but, so I, I imagine under that tarp is all just taken off, and he's just replacing all of that.
So that's repaired, but is it going to prevent any wire sinking?
So the, the issue you had there, is you see the, you see the roof line? That's gray, that comes to the white of the bell tower. So you should never have, you've got an intersection of a, of a slope and a, and a straight line.
Yeah.
You used to have, there was a gutter that kinda came out there about three clavards down. And it just wasn't carrying enough water. So I think what I'm gonna do is ask Steve to kinda come out and just give us some, you know, what are some suggestions of how to move water away from that? Because you just wanna move the water away from the building as best you can, so.
And that gutter was actually holding it all there, it's super clogged, so.
Yeah, so it may be that there's some kind of sheeting that can get put up to create another ridge or the valley that will then push water away, but then we gotta think of, and then you got water shooting off of there, so we're just gonna have to do some creative thinking.
You know, I, I.
Right, but again, I think that we can resolve that and not reoccur that damage.
There were some other areas around the building, like over on the school street side, right when you're coming up. There's two doors there that are side by side, they're covered with a roof, but there, I think the plow maybe hit it a few years ago, or a board was coming up. So there's just various spots around the outside of the building that we went around, and Dave is replacing all boards.
Mentioned plow, who plows this?
Ivor. Ivor does. The clock tower here, when they were up there feeding, the floor had some leaking and some swishiness to it. So there's a floor in there that you could go and stand on, if you ever wanted to. So they called Jeff Jones. I don't know if anyone's familiar with them, I haven't met them for the first time. And they, he came back and just repaired a little bit of that floor. But we'll need to get a bigger estimate to see how much to make it so that it doesn't leak any further and absorb water. And budget for that for next year.
Is it necessarily on that clock tower, or is it for purpose, or is it just an architectural?
Yeah, yeah.
It's architectural. But when Angie's gonna challenge her kids, if they read so many books, she'll go up there, sit and read them.
After the floor. That clock tower is not totally without purpose, the bottom of that is the gym closet. One of the gym closets, right in that corner. What?
You can get up to it?
Uh, no.
No. You need a ladder to get up there.
You gotta go through there.
But there's no, there's no bell up there, there's no, it's just architectural.
I saw it as a plaque tower, it's a bell tower.
So.
Sorry. So we'll just, we'll need to just look at replacing that floor rather than just putting a little Band-Aid over it.
So that, that's something I, I was saying, like.
We have that money available.
So you have money available, so you can either look to get it, we can get an estimate on it and begin work even this year, so that, you know, go further. Or you could look to get the estimate and add it to your budget.
Right, either one then.
So either way, we, we should probably get that estimate as soon as possible, just.
Okay, I can get it, yeah. He did put a little like Band-Aid over it, right, like went up there, because the lift was here before they did the paving. And so Grump had him use that lift, so he could get up there and he put a, right over it. The shed roof, I didn't wanna take a picture of the mold and go in there. So the underside of the back part of the roof on the inside is just covered in mold. So we got the same guys, Jeff Jones, he's gonna come out and repair it for us. We can just take that from our repair slide.
What does that say, is there a foundation or some stone foundation under that shed?
Yeah, I think there's some stone. That was like a shed from what Gary has told me, that was purchased from like a shed company, yeah. So he's gonna take off the entire roof and put new wood down. And, and then put a metal roof on it, like the one that's on the other, looks just like that one, they call it a corrugated. Just cause there's a lot there, like there's a lot of moisture going on there with the trees and stuff, so there is mold that grows on those shingles, so we just figured.
It took back those ones.
That's, that's what I was looking to, if you look at it.
Yeah, I've worked and cut those back.
Yeah.
For Gary, depending on how that, yeah.
Are those trees on foundation there?
Yeah, the foundation. They're on the underside.
Foundation, it gives us permission to cut a few of the trees down?
Well, we'll take a look at it, I mean, it, you know, maybe it's just trimming them back, you know, to bring some more light into that area, unless, because I'm looking at the growth over the building itself, and that's what we wanna avoid. But, you know, if it's, if someone says, you know, you might wanna take a couple of those trees down, then we'll have to work with them, to work on that, so.
Our open positions, we have a special education position that's open, that's hired through the SU board and the special education department. We had our, an interview yesterday for a counselor, so there's just some things we have to work out to see if that will be a hire for us or not. Kathy was there, we had a couple classroom teachers, Nurse Desby and Sarah were in the interview. Just some learning from the end of the year, that hasn't been showcased really. There's, so every year, we have the next class that's rising into that class go and visit the other classroom, and then the older kids in that class, you know, tell them all about it. So the bottom there, there's Charlie explaining to Marley and Rowan all about first grade. And then Maverick's doing the same thing on the other side with Gracie and Marley about math. We had our field day, and on the left there, we have our annual field day where the sixth graders play the staff. The staff always wins, which is pretty fun, but this year, there was only a few sixth graders, four sixth graders, so they opted to have the fifth graders play too, which was great. And the youngers have ice cream that the PTO brings them, which is great. We've got our garden, we've got our pollinator garden, as you walk out in the back, and then to the right is our vegetable garden, and the kids painted rocks to label the garden. This was our Hawaiian dance that the PTO sponsor. Super fun, those are always really fun. And this is the whole school, at the end of the year, we took another all-school photo with the slide in there, because it was usually on the playground, but we didn't have the playground the past couple of years, so. That's it.
Nice.
Any questions?
No, I still.
I have a question about, we haven't, I know the goal is to hire everybody before school starts, but what is the plan? If the special educator is not hired by?
So we, we've got some irons in the fire, things just haven't finalized, so I can't give you everything right now, but we will ensure that there is services out here to provide for students. So I'm working with Shelley Wilson, the Director of Student and Family Systems, and then Lori Boomsberry, who is the secondary specialty coordinator. We're kind of, the three of us collaborating to make sure we're not missing things as we go along. And, and really, you know, I've said it, like, I'm, I'm really the short leg of that whole three-legged stool, because really Lori and Shelley are really carrying a lot of it, which I'm very appreciative of, to make sure that things are handled. We, we haven't finalized, but we do have a verbal commitment on someone to come in as the director. But they won't be starting for another month or so, just with the current position they're in. But there are, I just can't give you a name, but there, there will be someone out here providing services. It's actually pretty possible if someone you guys are familiar with, that's what we're hopeful for.
Will that be a shared position or?
Nope, will not be a shared position. We're looking, we're looking at, it might be a couple of folks who are doing, they only wanna work part-time. So they'll be, they'll be sharing the full-time position.
Hold an unfinished business for discussion. The ramifications, that under executive or?
No, that's just, so you had, I think we, like we just did now, right? We, we made an adjustment to the agenda because it wasn't on there. And so in, in good practice, you need to go back and just ratify that previous vote. Which I believe you unanimously appointed her to that position. So we just need a motion to approve the traffic.
I approve the appointment of the point five, the EMAT teacher, Redder.
All in favor?
Alright.
Anybody? The eyes have it. Two point, point five, old math teacher, Elaine Crater.
And that's your, your intervention math teacher.
And update the after-school program.
So I had this on there, I put it on there hoping that I was gonna have an answer for you. I have not heard back from Healthy Kids at this time. I did let them know that there was interest out here for after-school programming. And so I reached out to them earlier this week, trying to hopefully have an answer, I just have not had it. The reply back was they were on summer vacation, so I'm trying to get something in right beforehand. So as soon as I do have an update, I will, you know, at least send an informational email to the board, so that they're aware of it, but.
Can you explain a little bit about Healthy Kids?
Yeah, Healthy Kids is just a private, they're a private organization that they do, they provide, so they can provide before-school and after-school, depending on what people are looking for. And obviously, there's, there's break points, but typically, if there's enough interest, they can, they look to find someone to come out and do it. They can hire our own staff, but because they're a separate company, it's, it's not impacting our budgets. Typically, they, the, the costs, when we broke it down and looked at them, in Rockingham, in the past, we used the YMCA at some of the schools, pre-COVID. Their costs are actually cheaper than the YMCA. They're slightly higher than what we typically charge for the 21C program at Westminster. So we typically charge six dollars at Westminster. And then the YMCA is around fourteen dollars, so they're, they're somewhere in between that. I think most of it, ten dollars, just don't have it in front of me, so I apologize. Let's, and then they work with families who need, who aren't able to do that, meet certain subsidy, there, there's a way you can get those subsidies, so. But they have a staff member, they go, they do all the background checks, they do all of that, and they, they just, they have a person who's here and runs the program, so.
Yeah, an estimate of what, I guess, maybe if we had, say, ten kids.
Well, it'd be like ten dollars, they pay for it, so the parents pay.
Okay.
So it's a, and you can pay like for the whole month ahead of time. They have a, and then you can pay for it if you want. The breakdown usually is like a two to three days a week, or four to five, basically. So if you are only looking for a couple of days, they have a price point for that, and then for the whole week, they have a price point. They do also have a, like a, a day-to-day fee as well, so if there's something that, something comes up and a parent wants to do it that way, they can do it as well, so. But that's the, the, the big shift that's happened this year is that SFR funds have covered all of those after-school programs for three years. Now that the SFR funds are gone, it, we're, we're gonna have to go back to that or look to, do we wanna build something into budgets?
So if this was acceptable or a go, who does the labor?
Healthy Kids does it all, and that's the, the, the one advantage right now is we're making, so the other piece is we are gonna be looking to do a 21C grant for the entire SU for next year. And that's like a multi-year grant, 21C is an after-school program, and, but there are matching funds that have to go along with it, so there's some budgetary things we have to talk about in the future. But with Healthy Kids, they, it's, it's their staff that oversees it, they do the hiring, they, they create a flyer, they ask us to send it out, we post it. They ask us to send it out, we post it, things like that, but then when parents sign up, everything, Healthy Kids. And then they just work with the school, say, these, these kids are doing the after-school program. And so, uh, the school just works with them, so because of partnership at that point, so, and they use the facilities, so at, um, at the, at the, at the Saxons River Central and, um, the middle school where they're, they're running some programming right now, um, they've already shipped stuff, we've set it aside, so we've created an office for the, things of that nature, so, I mean, the other piece is if there are families that are interested, we could also try and figure out something, so if it's not just, like, if there's a little couple of Healthy Kids can't find a way to actually have a staff member here or whatever, and we can get them down to Saxons River, they can, they can access the, the programming there as well, so we want to get someone here, but if they're, they can't find someone right away and parents need some help, we can fit, you know, we can work with busing and make that happen.
So if it did come about, what's the start date tonight?
And I, without, without talking to them, I can't speak to them, so.
Because, I know the after-school, what we had last year, it started late.
Yeah, so I, I haven't spoken to them, so I, I don't know. So I'm speculating here, but, I mean, they need to hire a staff member, so finding a staff member, getting a staff member on, getting them onboarded, usually takes a few weeks to do that, so it wouldn't be something that is starting on day one. Um, but I, I just, I also don't know the start date for like Saxons River, so, but I will get that, get it out to Angie, and then we can get it up to the.
Yeah. Um, I just want to add, I did put it on the agenda, there, on whole business. I know they did the, um, survey for parents, and I had a parent ask me about the survey, was it published and whatever results.
I apologize, I, I, I'm not prepared for anything, I don't see anything on the agenda, so are you?
No, I just.
Climate survey?
Oh, she said some survey.
So we did, we, we did a climate survey, uh, back in May. Um, we did our second year of doing it. Um, Shelley Wilson is overseeing that, she will be coming to the SU board at the end of August and presenting, uh, an overview from an SU, you know, fifty thousand view, then she will, in September, be coming to the different boards to talk about graph and elementary school findings, so, um.
Okay, because I think what this parent was asking, how come they don't have any information? Whatever survey they, consuming is what you're just talking about.
So we did a climate survey at the end of the school year, and then we've been breaking it down and, and, and pieces of that, we share it with our administration first so that they can also share it then with the teachers, then on any day that this is how we're rolling it out, it will then go to, um, the SU or the, the large view, and then it will come down to the individual pieces. So it's not a survey like, um, that we would immediately publish out because there's some nuances, so things that I picked up.
So Angela, have you, have you been approached any parents asking you about the survey?
I don't know. I have not. I have seen it, and then there's also a student survey, is that one shared?
Yeah, so, so when, when, when Ms. Wilson comes, she will be talking about the parent survey, the, the student survey, and the staff survey, so we've done all three of them this year, and, and that's what, so we, it's a lot of collab, you know, calibration of the different surveys, I mean, it's all one company, so they, they line up, but we look at the trends and expect. The key is the results are coming, yeah.
Alright, so I can tell what?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And again, I would say if, if parents are approaching you and asking you questions, please send them my way, we would be happy to, because we haven't had any phone calls either.
I usually say check for that.
Well, we, we say, you know, go to the, go to your teacher, go to your student's teacher, go to your principal, and then come to us, but, you know, if it's something as big as a survey, you can send them our way.
Thank you. Any other, um, older unfinished? Um, a new business discussion, discussing planning of a community.
Yeah, so we've been, um, obviously, we, we know that the the enrollment rate here is not ideal, it's not where we'd like it to be, we also know that there's a heavy impact on the, uh, community as a whole with the cost per student. Um, but every summer and, or spring, you know, I think Angela gets a lot of it, and I get a lot of it, of questions of, is the school gonna stay open? Is it, you know, what, what, what's going on, what's going on? And I think for the health of our, of our school here, that we should, um, embark upon a, a couple of different community forums to have some real good discussions around the future of graph and elementary school and what people want to see and, and to keep it open and lay out the finances, I know that Hardy's done a lot of work on looking at projections and what costs may be. Um, you know, the future is obviously unknown, but I think that, um, you know, we, I think it'd be really good to kind of get to a point where we're working towards some type of commitment, I would be looking for some type of commitment, and be held to it, obviously, because you never know what's gonna happen, but that we can have reassurance for our students, uh, for our staff, but also for our community, that if we're, where are we projecting the school to be open, and, and because we want to keep it open and we want to have it be healthy, but I think every year, you know, I'm, I'm going into my fourth year, of people feeling like they're kind of walking on eggshells, and that's not helping. And that's not good, um, and so, uh, what I'd like to do is kind of help spearhead, you know, some of those discussions, put out some surveys, but also just do some real focus groups of what's so great about here. I know that last year we talked about how can we spur, we got one family that's looking to come here, you know, this year, how can we help generate some of those, those positivities? So we'll be looking to kind of do that, if it's okay with the board, just putting that together, I'll work with Angie, we'll get some dates going and um, try and get it all front-loaded, uh, in the fall.
I think that's important, um, to get the right off of that. Um, any other board members on? Any questions or comments? Thank you for coming.
Sure. Pleasure. Yes, a motion to go into executive session.
Do you want to direct his comments?
No.
Um, I think that you are going to need to come out and have, um, action, so therefore I think you can, you can still hold the record.
So, um, a motion to go into the executive session.
We discuss a contract
Contract.
That would put, um, gee, personally, you stand the language in my head. Put the, uh, the, the board and, uh, the teachers at a disadvantage.
So.
So. Um, and, I'm gonna ask if you could invite myself and. Would you want to be a part of it? And.
And it pulls back there, doesn't it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright.
Well, I'm moving to executive session. Okay, we're at an executive session, um, to discuss.
After the recent discussion, I move to ratify the tentative two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-seven collective bargaining agreement with the Wyndham Northeast Association. Seeing the approval, the other boards that comprise the Wyndham Northeast supervise are renewed.
Second. Okay, motion made by Hardy, seconded by Rachel. All in favor of the motion, read by Hardy.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion, motion has carried. Yep. Um, director's comments. Hardy.
Um, I'm glad that, uh, the contract has been ratified, it's been a lot of work, a lot of people, Rachel on our board. And, uh, I think it's a fair contract, for all parties concerned. Glad it's done before we start the school year, everybody knows where we are and where we're going, so.
Thank you, Hardy. Uh, Rachel.
Hi, really sorry, and just looking forward to the new school year. Really sorry, I'm mad, and really enjoyed the presentation of the slide, but.
Um, yeah, great meeting, we've got a lot accomplished, a lot discussed, a lot to look forward to, um, for our new school year. Uh, especially, um, meeting, uh, new staff and, and kiddos. And also, um, the planning of our community forum. So, thank, thanks everybody for coming, thank you.
May, may, and I know, it's not direct, I just want to remind folks that school starts Wednesday, August twenty, twenty-eighth. So we're looking forward to all our students coming back on that day. Um, we have teachers starting on Friday, August twenty-third, let's, teachers and support staff are all, uh, starting on that day. We have new teacher orientation starting just before that, so we got a lot coming up in the next couple of weeks, so.
And do we have another meeting in August?
We do not have one scheduled, but if we need to have one, we can definitely.
Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Cross second. Thank you, everybody have a great evening.
Thank you for watching this Fact TV presentation. If you would like a digital or DVD copy of the meeting, please contact us by phone or email. Our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three, or email us at fact eighteen at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community Television, keeping government honest.